This comes a little late because the March 27th impact was the only notification that was released. And there was an opinion questionnaire put out by the Delta Day Student Association. And these questionnaires were placed inside the DSA's office and the Activities Office. They weren't placed in the lounges where the students had easily access to them. Unfortunately, not all of the students read the impact or the Mustang, which is our only form of communication with the Board of Trustees and the Delta Student Associations. The only notification that we received that this policy had gone into effect was from the South Record, which is our local publication. And since that time, a letter from myself is in the impact, a letter from Mr. Clark, and a letter from another student who's a nonsmoker have been the only notifications that this policy will take effect on January 1st. Most of the student bodies do not realize that this ban is going into effect. The people that I've spoken with here at Delta College agree that the smoking in dinner halls should probably be eliminated because the smoking is non-discriminate and it's not partitioned off in the area. However, they feel that one of the lounges should be left open for smokers. There's a place in our society for the handicapped, the alcohol and drug abuser, and even the criminal, but with this type of action, it's being made very clear that there's no place in this society and on this campus for smokers. And we would like this to be re-looked at. Thank you.
And if all of you, anybody else?
Once we, the people, Gordon Clark, 1425 Mariposa Way. I'm also a student on this campus. Once we, the people, stood aside and trusted the judgment of our elected officials. As we stood aside, we watched poor judgment flow forth like water down the Delta Mendota Canal. To place perspective, the poor judgment of this board, I will share some information with you. The president of this college took a $20,000 a year raise on top of a $90,000 a year salary. Two assistant deans were hired at a cost of $80,000 each. This college, at one time, had $200,000 budgeted for lawn mower repair. I have one more. There is $940,000 budgeted under the nebulous subtitle, "Planning and Analysis." The total amount mentioned, $1,320,000. This money would be better spent on the front line of education, classrooms, and instructors. According to the current faculty salary schedule, qualified MAs could be hired at a cost of $40,000 each. With the amounts of money I've mentioned, several departments could have been open for instructing. You, ladies and gentlemen, have larger issues to discuss than smoking. Yet here we stand, discussing peripheral issues while the real issues are getting away. I, for one, am tired of the bread and circus. We stand before you tonight to keep the right of choice. We are not children asking for permission. We are taxpayers and voters. As smokers, we have been cheated by a governing body who would remove the right of choice. As students, we have been cheated by a lack of funding on the front line of education. Therefore, we are left with no other option. If you do not rescind or amend the smoking ban, we are prepared to contact the American Civil Liberties Union and file suit. Also, we are preparing press releases regarding some of the elements of your budgets. No longer shall we stand passively by. No longer shall we watch poor judgment flow forth. No longer shall we buy into your bread and circus. No longer shall we watch fiscal conservatism be detrimental to the purpose of education. No longer shall we be dehumanized by governing bodies who would take away the constitutionally guaranteed rights of the individual. Thank you very much.
My name is Kevin Nishi, and I'm the DSA Parliamentarian. In regard to the smoking issue, this issue came before DSA, came before us about two semesters ago. And the main reason why DSA has backed this policy is because many of the smokers might not know this, but the ventilation, the ventilation in the lounges are connected to the rest of the building. And a lot of faculty members as well as students have complained that they've smelled the smoke through the ventilation areas. And the reason that the DSA has also stood behind this policy is because it's our responsibility to support the majority of the students. And the majority of the students do believe that this policy is valid.
Questionnaire exams are mandatory to students. We also question your methods.
There's no comments returned. Anybody else?
Mr. President?
I have a note that I have to read here. It says during the public comment section, "Students Sayed Ma Bu Sha would like to formally make a suggestion that in order to avoid confusion among students and the public regarding the respective roles of the college president and the board president, the board president's title should be changed to board chairman." That's the end of note.
Yes, that's my proposal. May I speak? My name is Sha. I live in Oda, 1511 South Fairbanks. When I came to this college, I'm a full-time student too. There was a confusion, presidents, which president? Everybody has this kind of confusion. I think the president of the board should be designated as chairman so that the president of the college stands high lighting. And that is my suggestion. There are many such kinds of misnomers. For example, Indians, that's a historical misnomer. Native Americans are called Indians. America is much more forthcoming. It takes suggestions, and for to remove confusion, I think this suggestion would be good. If in other community colleges, the same kind of tradition is going on, that's another matter. We must seek to avoid confusion and streamline our nomenclature and our administration. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the public? If not, we'll move on to...
Mr. President, I have a jotted comment. Referencing back to the smoking issue, what really is important here and that what we would like, I think as one board member anyway, what I would like the students to understand is that the decision was made in an environment of shared governance. We, a recommendation came to the board. It has to be understood that in that, that in the environment of shared governance, when all factions of the college discussed this for, I don't know how long, quite a long period of time, there was input from students, from faculty, from classified administrators. All that went on for some time before that recommendation came to the board. With that strong recommendation, the board then would fly in the face of what shared governance is and what democracy is, to have denied that. So that was our position at the time. I wanted to make that clear to the smokers, that that's where it came from.
Okay, we'll move on now to General Dr. Horton, Administration of the Oath and Office of Elected Officials.
Yes, in background, Dr. Acosta. The Board of Trustees initiated procedures for the election of trustees from four trustee areas, 1, 2, 5, and 6. And at your October 29, 1992 meeting, the board adopted Resolution Number 9271 approving the seating of Dan Parisis and Joan Matthews as trustees from trustee areas 5 and 6 respectively. This action was taken pursuant to the education code for this particular section due to the fact that these individuals were unopposed for election to their trustee seats from the trustee areas mentioned. On November 3rd, 1992, the general election was held, at which time the voters of the district voted on candidates in trustee areas 1 and 2. It's been certified by the County Register of Voters that Anthony U. Bugarian was duly elected as a trustee from Area 1, and Christine P. Filton was elected as trustee from trustee Area 2. We've made arrangements to have the Honorable Judge James Dera of the Superior Court of San Joaquin County to be present this evening. I'd like to mention that Judge Dera was originally elected to the Board of Trustees in 1963. It was the first board, and served until 1971. So with that, you may want to now turn it over to Judge Dera.
We'll turn it over to the judge.
Okay, I do appreciate your, my old fixture when I used to have hair.
You haven't changed much either.
Okay, first, trustee Area 1. So Anthony Bugarian, would you please come stand over here? That's all right. Just a quick question. Will you please raise your right hand? And will you say aye and state your name?
Aye, Anthony U. Bugarian.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation?
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of trustee of San Joaquin Community College District Trustee for Area 1.
That I will...
But I will discharge the duties?
That I will discharge the duties of the Area, Area 1 trustees, San Joaquin Delta College.
Very good. Congratulations. Aye and state your name.
Aye, Christine P. Filton.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duty of trustee of Area 2?
The duty of trustee of Area 2.
Of the San Joaquin Delta Junior College, Community College District.
Of the San Joaquin Community College District.
Perfect. And now for those who've been through this before, Joan Matthews and Dan Parisis would step up on their proud reelection.
Are you going to discriminate against us, Judge?
If I haven't already.
You just did the other two separate.
Well, that's individual option. You want to do them separate or together?
No, it's okay. Come on. I asked you.
I've got lots of other stuff to do. Okay, would you both raise your right hand? And aye, and would you please state your name first?
Aye, Joan Matthews.
Aye, Dan Parisis.
Okay, do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of trustee?
Of trustee.
Of the San Joaquin Delta Community College District.
Of the San Joaquin Delta Community College District.
Congratulations. Anybody else wants to take pictures? This is a good time.
Thank you.
Wonderful institution.
I nominate, I would like to nominate Ted Bullis for the presidency.
Anybody else?
Do we need the second nomination?
No. No further names added to it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Mr. Bullis, you are the president, and I'll present you with it.
We have about a five-minute recess. We can have a little reorganization of the chairs up here.
Could I suggest that you may go through the remaining election of officers, and then I'd like to speak to the calendar, and then maybe you'll go recess as possible.
First of all, I would like to thank my colleagues for giving me this opportunity to lead you through this next year. I'm very appreciative of all of you, and thank you very much. Before we continue, I would like to compliment and thank Joseph Acosta, Dr. Joseph Acosta, for his leadership this past year. Joe, you're an inspiration to all of us in your leadership this past year with our constraints of monies and what have you. Thank you very much.
Next order of business is the nomination for Vice President.
I move that Joan Matthews be Vice President. Any more nominations? If not, I will entertain a motion to the nomination. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Joan, congratulations.
Thank you.
The nominations are open for a clerk of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Maria Elena Serna for the board clerk.
Do you have any other nominations? If not, I will entertain a motion to the nomination.
Move the nomination be closed.
Have a second today?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to you.
This time it is, I would like to point the Governance Committee, Legislatively, Board Committee on Governance and Legislative Issues, the current membership is Joan Matthews and myself, and I would like to add Christine Filton to that committee. And that committee meets occasionally and makes recommendations to the board on matters that come up about governance. And I would like to point on the Construction Committee, we appoint Dr. Joseph Acosta and Dan Parisis for the Construction Committee. This time, I would like to officially welcome Christine Filton and Anthony Bugarian to our board. If you'll give me the opportunity, I would like to just read it. Incoming Board Trustee Member Christine Filton is already familiar with San Joaquin Delta College. She attended Delta College as a full-time student, obtaining an ADN degree in 1970. After graduation, she worked as a registered nurse in Stockton for 10 years, from 1970 to 1980. During that time, she held positions of supervising RN in a health clinic and also at a 99-bed skilled care facility. In 1984, she received her JD, Doctor Juris Prudence from the George School of Law as a student of UOP, and was admitted to the California Bar Association in 1985. She then added a diploma in 1986 from the University of San Diego, London, England, Institute of International Comparative Law. Currently, our new trustee specializes in corporate counseling as a paralegal department chairperson at Humphreys College, which is a club with the California Bar Association. She began her career at Humphreys as a professor of law in 1988. Additionally, she is working for an interstate company as a corporate counselor. Christine Filton finds time for social and community work in her busy schedule. She has been working in a convalescent hospitals, Planned Parenthood institutions, as a volunteer in community services, and counseling in health-related fields. She is also active in life-form human services at UOP. Christine, welcome to the board.
Thanks.
Anthony Tony Bugarian, incoming Board Trustee Member. Anthony, or Tony as it refers to be addressed, Bugarian is also a San Joaquin Delta College Trust graduate, having earned an Associate of Arts degree in Social Science in 1974. He continued his education with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Liberal Studies, School of Education at UOP, and in '76 as a Master's of Education, Curriculum Instruction, at UOP in 1981. He holds a Ryan Multi-subject Teaching credential earned in 1976, and a Preliminary Administrative credential completed in 1987. Tony Bugarian is a U.S. Air Force veteran. He served on active duty from 1969 to 1973, including 18 months in Vietnam. He is still active in the Air Force Reserve. His career in education includes teaching 5th and 8th grade and coaching numerous sports. He was part-time at Chapman College, Stockton, was Vice Principal of Sequoia School in Manteca, is currently Principal of the French Camp School in the Manteca Unified School District. Our new trustee is active in community service, including the PTA, Leadership Manteca Programs through Manteca Chamber of Commerce, Association of California School Administrators, Manteca Educators Association, and the Air Force Sergeants Association. His involvement with Delta continues with his wife, Sylvia. She is currently studying sociology here. Tony, welcome to the board. I can look and hold it up as a credit. I would like to say that out of the seven board members we have, we have five members who are in education. Joan Matthews has been teaching in the past, and Christine is teaching at Humphreys College. Anthony is an administrator in Manteca, and Maria Elena Serna is in education in the Oda U... Oda U? First time. Oda. And then first, Dr. Acosta is a past professor and graduate, and also a teacher at Delta College.
You and I are in minority again.
Yes.
President Bullis, I offer a suggestion as a part of this action item, two additional things. A board policy prescribes that I serve as secretary, so that's, I've been automatic, and I assume the board does not want to change policy at this point. Then also, at this same meeting, you structure your meeting dates for the year. Traditionally, the board is met on the first and third Tuesdays at every night, with one meeting in December due to the proximity of the third Tuesday to the traditional winter break. And only one meeting held during the months of each month of July and August, since those are traditionally right agendas during the summer months. We do have problems periodically with January on the first and third Tuesdays. For instance, the first Tuesday in January 1993 is on January 5, and the college doesn't open again after Christmas break until January 4. It'd be awfully difficult to not, to prepare an agenda for that particular meeting. Nevertheless, I've included in your board packet Option A, which would have one meeting in January on the second Tuesday of the month, or Option B, which would remain the first and third Tuesdays. I personally believe that Option A is the better option for all of us. And we're recommending that the board designate the calendar that we've presented with Option A, and that it be adopted for your meeting dates for this year.
Second. Moving second, that we adopt the Option A, which gives us one meeting in January, one meeting in July.
What I'd like to do is come back on that. We can study what to do on that particular day.
We have a motion. All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Closed? So carried. We'll have a five-minute break. I think they want to reorganize the trustees. It's about five minutes.